To order, uh, this is the May first meeting of planning and zoning. Uh, our first item is to pledge allegiance, please stand with me and place the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
First item on the agenda are consent items. Uh, before we address that, because we have an unusually large group of folks who have a lot to say today, I would consider a motion.
Two minutes.
No. But we need to, I want to move.
Okay.
I want to move the consent, we've got a number of things, consent items in a public hearing.
Is it not on?
No.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, right, so, uh, I would consider a motion that we change the order of events that are on the agenda, uh, because we have a lot of folks who have a lot to say, I'd like to go ahead and, and get the other items taken care of, we'll move the, we'd consider moving the issue on the mobile homes to the end of the agenda so that we spend sufficient time to cover all the issues that I think are going to come up.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion to move items eight and nine to the end of the agenda, have a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same saying. Okay, now, the first matter to be heard are the consent items, do we have a, a motion or discussion on that?
I move to approve.
A motion to approve all consent items, your second?
I second.
Have a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Right, so moving on. The next couple of matters are matters for, uh, public hearing. Case file number 2023 dash sixty-three P, it's a public hearing to consider the reinstatement of a preliminary plat of Homestead at Parks Bell Ranch, sixth filed, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, the applicant and owner of 2015 Crosby LLC with their consultant LCA is seeking to reinstate the preliminary plat to create lots for residential development. The property involved in this request is located on the east side of Legacy Road, approximately three hundred and seventy feet north of East Yukon Road. Land use in the area consists of vacant land to the north, east, and south, with the west being comprised of resident, residential use and vacant land. Uh, this preliminary plat was initially approved on September twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three, and today is just being considered for reinstatement. Staff received no internal objections for the case, and therefore we do recommend approval of the preliminary plat of Homestead at Parks Bell Ranch, sixth filing, subject to condition A. We are now open for questions.
Are there any questions, staff? If there are no questions, if staff, I would note that this is a public hearing, if there's anyone in the audience today that is here to speak in favor of or in opposition to case file number twenty-twenty-three dash sixty-three P, I would ask that you come forward now, uh, give us your name. Seeing no one come forward, uh, for public discussion, I will close the public part, turn the commission for either discussion or a motion.
I move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same saying. Going on now to, uh, case file number twenty-twenty-five dash zero-four AZ, this is a public hearing to consider a request by VNO Realty Owner for an initial zoning of Light Industrial on a three point nine four acre tract of land in section forty, uh, abstract five ninety-three, block forty-two, township two, south A seventy. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Chairman and Commission members. Um, the applicant Maverick Engineering on behalf of VNO Realty is requesting an original zone change of Light Industrial District on a three point ninety-four acre tract of land in section forty, abstract five ninety-three, block forty-two, township T two S, township two, south A seventy, Texas and Pa Pacific Railway Company Survey, Ector County, Texas. The purpose of the original zone change to Light Industrial District is to create commercial development for ownership purposes. There is currently an annexation in process to incorporate the three point ninety-four acre tract of land into the city of Odessa. We sent out thirteen notices, none were returned, no protest, no approvals. Um, the surrounding land use, the tract of land is located in a general area that includes Light Industrial, uh, planning shall comply with all Light Industrial District standards and regulations. The landscape shall conform to the regulations set forth in article ten two of the City of Odessa Code's Ordinances. Staff recommends approval of the original zoning of Light Industrial for commercial development, subject to condition A, and I'm here for any questions.
Are there any questions, staff? If there are no questions, staff, then I would again note this is a public hearing, if there is anyone today that, uh, wishes to speak in favor of or in opposition to this specific matter, now would be the time to come forward. Seeing no one come forward, I will close public discussion, turn the commission for a motion or discussion.
So move.
Have a motion for approval?
I second.
Have a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, now skipping down the next two items, uh, I believe are not public hearings, so I need to close public hearing, uh, so, can I get a motion to close public hearing?
Motion to close public hearings at this time.
Second.
Have a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, we're going to take up, uh, what may be on your agenda. Oh, yeah, okay. Case file number twenty-twenty-five dash forty-four P, this is, uh, consider approval of final plat, Homestead at Parks Bell Ranch, sixth filing, phase one, yes, sir.
Thank, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, the applicant, um, twenty fifteen Crosby LLC with LCA consultant is seeking to plot a nineteen point six-two-eight acre tract located in section forty-six, block forty-one, city of Odessa, Ector, and Midland County, Texas, for residential development. We routed this out through each department. Staff recommends approval of the final plat of Homestead at Park, Parks Bell Ranch, sixth filing, phase one, subject to condition, conditions A and B. We're now open for questions.
Do you have any issue with the, those lots that are both in Midland County and Ector County, did that get resolved? I think there were six or seven lots.
Uh, no, sir, uh, we did reach out to Ector County, they said they had no issue with it, um, that's why we're bringing it forward in, um, Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, they will be, the whole area will be platted, so, uh, plating, uh, can be done with those lots that are outside city limits.
Okay, all right, thank you. Are there any other questions, staff? Uh, if there are no questions, staff, then I stand ready for discussion or a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same saying. Okay, thank you, motion passes, going on now to case file twenty-twenty-five dash forty-three P, this property is in ETJ, uh, involves a preliminary plat of Mendoza subdivision, being a one point five-six acre tract of land in the west part, section thirty-three, block forty-three, T two S, T N P Railway Company Survey, yes, sir.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioner, the applicant and owner, Jose Luis Mendoza, with, uh, consultant SW Howell, INC., is seeking to plot to create one lot for residential development, this has been routed out through each, uh, department for internal review. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat of Mendoza subdivision, subject to condition A and B, we're now open for questions.
Any questions, staff? Thank you, uh, stand ready for a motion.
I move to approve case file number twenty-twenty-five dash forty-three dash P in the ETJ.
Your second?
I second.
Have a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And now, I think I need a motion to go back into public hearing.
So move.
Motion from Connie to, I have a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right. All right, this is now on agenda item number eight, open a public hearing to consider approval of an amendment to the City Code Ordinances, chapter fourteen, zoning attachment one, use of land and building scheduled to remove mobile or HUD manufactured home dwellings as permitted uses in the general residence, residence district, university district, retail district, retail one district, light commercial district, heavy commercial district, light industrial district, and planned development. Mobile home and HUD manufactured homes would continue to be allowed in the mobile home district and mobile home estate district.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Chairman and, um, so I'm first going to address the public and say thank you very much for being here, um, I'm just going to go and kind of say what, how, what this means, um, how many of you guys, it's first time being here? Okay, so, this is why I'm, I wanted to kind of give an explanation of what's going to happen, so I'm going to give a brief presentation of what we're proposing, this is a proposal, does not mean that this is a law, this is where you guys and us are going to have a conversation to see what's going to work, what's not going to work, what are we going to change, what is good to change, some stuff that we're looking into is making sure that we're complying to our state laws, making sure that you guys have the right, um, laws to protect yourself, so that's one of the things that we're going to be bringing up, we're going to be talking about two subjects, but I'm going to be presenting it in all-in-one because they all kind of work together, if we make a change here, it kind of has an effect on this other area in our policies and our laws, so I just want to make sure that, you know, you guys are left here with all of the information that you guys need, so if I don't say something that you guys have a question, this is a time to ask, let's say that we, you can't think about something today, that's okay, we still have time for you guys to come and ask us more questions, um, after this meeting, we will be having, um, city council meeting for it, it's going to be on May twenty-seventh, so, we're going to have that one, um, our commissioners here are recommending bodies to our council, so they're also going to be hearing what you guys are saying, and they will be giving a recommendation to our council, okay? So I'll first be giving a presentation, and then we're going to open it up for you guys to come and give a, um, come and give a, any kind of speech of what you wanted.
I would like to see if you all would take in consideration, as we're people, uh, to consider the time that you scheduled this, most of us work at one-thirty, we're at lunch.
That's why I said I thank you very much.
Take that into consideration.
Yes, but we will, unfortunately, I am tied to this, uh, time, because on our, based on our charter, this is the time that I have, but I will tell you that the meeting for city council is at night, it's at six o'clock. Okay, so we'll get started with.
Councilman.
Uh, I think you need to explain the matter, a lot of people are here because they feel like they've been kicked out the house because of the letter being miswritten.
Sure.
We need to let some of these people get comfortable and let them know that the letter was miswritten.
So the.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, and let them know that they already, that's nothing, we're not trying to kick nobody out the house, the letter was written wrong, and we need to let some of the people be relaxed and say, hey, I'm here because I think I got to move, nobody's got to move.
Correct.
So, go ahead and explain that.
Correct. So, but, the letter is, by state law, I'm recommended, I'm told how I need to send a letter and how it has to be addressed, and exactly what font, what it needs to say there, and it's meant to be that way, it's meant for you to capture your attention, so you come here to, and you're aware what's going on, that's why they say that, but nobody, like, Mr. Councilman Mitchell said, no one is being kicked out of their home, and let me go through my presentation, and then we'll go through all of that.
So, just to be clear.
We're going to go, yes, no, I'm going to speak, thank you, okay. Who has it? Yes. Okay, so we're here to talk about the mobile manufactured home ordinance amendment and the non-use, um, uses amendment.
If we could have some quiet in the audience and, uh...
So, I want to start off by explaining what zonings are, zoning helps community, communities manage the growth and protect the quality of life of our residents, because this is what we're talking about today. So, specifically today, we're going to be talking about mobile homes, manufactured homes, and modular homes, so I thought that the best thing to do is really go into it and understand what the definition is of each one, so we're talking about a mobile home, um, we're talking about something that was built before June fifteen of nineteen seventy-six, before, uh, pre-HUD codes, and they're often movable. Then we have the manufactured homes that were built after June fifteen in nineteen seventy-six, and that follows HUD codes, they can be relocated, or they can be placed on a permanent, uh, foundation, they usually have a HUD certification label, which is that red tag that you see there, um, and then we have our last one, which is modular homes, our modular homes are factory made, but they're delivered in sections and they are assembled on-site, they follow local building codes such as the IRC, not HUD. Sites in, um, in Odessa, modular homes are considered a type of single-family dwellings, and they're allowed in districts that allow single-family homes. So currently, we have, uh, ten districts that allow you to place mobile and manufactured homes, uh, those are general residential, uh, mobile homes, mobile home estates, uh, university, retail, retail one, light commercial, heavy commercial, and planned development. If this ordinance passes, we would only be allowed in two districts, which would be mobile home and, um, mobile home estates. What does that mean if you already own a mobile home and manufactured home? That means that you're grandfathered in, even if the zoning changes, you can still stay there. What does it mean if, again, if you have a mobile home, that means because you're grandfathered in, you can continue living on the property, you can replace it, you can pass it on to your heirs, you can sell it, even if the, this zoning changes. What does it mean if it's destroyed by fire, or a natural disaster, or it simply ages, and you, or you just decide that you want to change it for a newer one, right? You're allowed to replace it with a new manufactured home once, if it's aged, or if you want to just change it because you want to, however, if it's, um, damaged because of a natural disaster, you can change it as many times as needed. I don't know if I skipped.
Or a fire, correct?
Yes. What if my property is vacant? If your property is vacant, this is where it does affect you, that means that you would no longer be able to place a mobile home there, however, you would still be able to place a mobile home in the areas that are zoned, manufactured home and manufactured So that means that, again, I just want to make sure that even though this, if this ordinance passes, if you're in an area that's going to be altered, your grandfather, which in this case, which I'm going to go into our next section, which is where, um, we go into our code, a different part of our section, it means we're going to be talking about non-conforming, and non-conforming, in this case, for everybody else, would mean you're grandfathered in. So what does it mean to, uh, non-conforming? In the zoning, it means that, uh, non-conforming use is refers to a property that was legally established under old zoning law, but is no longer allowed, and in the current zoning district, or that doesn't mean current zoning regulations. And I'm now going to step to side and let Jeff Fisher explain what are the changes and how this is going to, um, improve.
Thank you, Elizabeth, uh, Planning Commission, uh, Mr. Peacock chaired, and members of the Planning Commission, so, uh, this is just, we could go through the whole ordinance and look at every common period, but what we did is we, we tried to neatly simplify and summarize some of the changes here and, and, and as a result of the, um, zoning proposal, so, we're just going to cover these very, very briefly, so the, the previous, the current ordinance right now, for any use, manufactured home, mobile home, bakery, retail store, if somebody has a non-conforming use, and they try to replace that use, rebuild that use, they only have six months to do it, and they have to go to the zoning board of adjustment, that costs two hundred dollars, there's a lot of things involved in that, so, um, also, some of, that's the first column, the second column is, there were some of the language in the current ordinance also, um, made it difficult, some of those limitations to, even if you got the, the zoning board of adjustment to approve you, for example, um, it was stated in the ordinance that you, you, if you have, let's say, a structure, and now you want to replace it, it can only be worth sixty percent of the current structure, well, that makes it very hard for folks, um, also, if the lot coverage, if you had a lot of buildings on the lot, and, and you were already over what the zoning maximum was, you couldn't, the third one was providing parking, a lot of the sites are already cluttered with buildings and structures, especially if they're non-conforming, so, those sections really apply to everything, but because we can't really separate them out and, and, you know, single out mobile homes versus others, we recommend it just, um, taking those out, now, we're going to get to the next part here about the, um, the state law in a second, but, um, also additional options, it talks about extending and enlarging, well, mobile and manufactured homes, it's nothing to extend, you can't do that legally under the residential code, so you have to replace, so we just changed some of that language, so, again, we're, we're going to go through these quick, because these are, these are, I think, most people are here because they don't want to lose their home, and this is more of the, the technical stuff, so, um, the other thing the ordinance did is, it wasn't clear on when a non-conforming use, when is that six months, really, they use the term discontinued, that's kind of vague, so we cleaned that up a little bit, um, as well. Okay, so this is the part that, um, we wanted to share, so, and this is where the replacement power comes, this is a state law, it's from the Texas occupancy code, twelve oh one dash oh oh eight, Google it and, and look it up later, but basically, it says that if you have an existing mobile or manufactured home, you're allowed to replace that regardless of zoning, so if this zoning ordinance passes, and in those ten, um, eight of those districts now are not allowing new mobile homes anymore, but you already have an existing one, which is a lot of the folks here today, um, you can replace that, uh, mobile or manufactured home with a new manufactured home, um, the only thing is, it has to be newer, or it has to be the same size and larger, now, mobile homes, remember Elizabeth was sharing a minute ago, those are before nineteen seventy-six, it's almost impossible even to find those, they don't meet HUD code today, so really, you're going to end up being newer anyway, and then the size is, again, basically, if you're replacing it, um, the current ordinance as it's written, says that you can do that once, and so, if you have your mobile home and you want to replace that, um, then you can do that, um, one time, with the exception of everything like fire, natural hazard, it's, you know, heaven forbid, there's a tornado that comes through, then they can replace, you, that does not count towards that, that one strike, so, um, again, you're not, no one's going to lose their home today, um, you're going to even be allowed to replace that, the change that we made for, just for mobile and manufactured homes is that previous page, you don't have to go to the ZBA anymore, if you comply with your setbacks on the property, you don't have to, then, in order to have a non-conforming use continue, you don't have to go to ZBA if you want to replace it, the current ordinance says that you do, so in the end, we're saying replacement is still allowed, you save the two hundred dollars, you don't have to go to another meeting like this, and you guys do great, but you know what I'm saying, um, and hopefully, this, this will move forward, the downside would be if somebody already has, wants to put a mobile home up, they're not going to be able, a new one, they don't have an existing one already, they're not going to be able to do that after this ordinance, this, one more quick thing, this does not apply to mobile home or manufactured home parks, okay, so those are still going to be allowed, um, in any of those districts where they're allowed today, and the reason for that, I think, is that it's a cluster, they're all kind of together, and so, the, the separation of land uses is achieved, and so, um, as, as we were, um, communicated to, that's, that's not part of the ordinance today, so it's only individual owners that have a, a single lot that want to put one home on the lot, those would be the ones that, that, for new ones, that would be, um, taken away.
Okay, so, what we need to take from this is that, um, if you are currently in an area that would be affected by this change, you're grandfathered in, you can replace your home once, or you can replace it as many times due to a natural disaster, we are still continuing on with the MH, an MHE zoning, so we still have designated zonings for it, and you can still request that zoning in any other area within town, we just have to come through here and go through the proper process of a zone change, um, we're, we're removing some of the limitations, and we're trying to, um, comply with our state law of twelve, uh, twelve oh one point zero zero eight, and, like I said, you can replace your new manufacturer, for a new manufactured home, or, um, once, and then for a natural disaster, you can replace as many times as you need it. So I'm now open for any questions that you guys may have.
Okay, I have a question, so what was the reasoning for staff to change this, I know this is all isn't law-related, so...
We were asked to look at it, so, usually, you have designated areas, so as, when I first started talking, there was a lot of areas that it doesn't go into, like the light industrial, heavy industrial, so, those are the areas where we really shouldn't have housing in there, and so, we're removing them from where they're not supposed to be.
Okay, well, what are we going to do, how are we going to replace some affordable housing, because there's a lot of places that you can put more mobile homes that...
And that's where it comes, where you can zone any other area for, specifically for mobile homes, and we're, again, we're not removing the MH and MHE, they're still staying in there.
I have a question also, and hope my mic's working, uh, and then I'm going, I want to kind of answer aside that Connie, Connie said, it was my understanding that retail and retail one, that mobile homes were not allowed, but you keep repeatedly saying that mobile homes are allowed in those two areas.
As of today, yes.
As of today.
Yes, correct.
But yesterday, I mean...
No, it has, if you're currently, if it's zone R one or R one, sorry, R or R one, it's allowed.
It's allowed.
Yes.
I mean, I've known folks who made an application for mobile homes in those areas, and they were told they were not allowed.
The only reason that, you would have to go case by case, I wouldn't be able to tell you, so, it could be, there can be so many different scenarios of why not, maybe they didn't have the property plotted, or there could have been other scenarios to it, I, I wouldn't be able to answer that.
Okay, now, getting back to Connie's deal, the reason why part of this came up because the, the mobile, which is last oil boom, you know, we always say there's not enough affordable housing, but with this last oil boom, uh, vacant lots were purchased, uh, mobile home was put on vacant lots, and people start to complain about, hey, I got three hundred thousand dollars tied up in a house, and next door someone comes in with a thirty thousand dollar mobile home, so, does this devaluate my house, does it put my house in danger because there are fire hazards, can, you know, associated with mobile homes and stuff, so that's, that's why I'm thinking some of the councils start to, to look into this.
I know, but most of the councilmen are not appraisers, so you have to talk to an appraiser about that, so it, it just depends on, so you can't be, so it depends on, that, that shouldn't restrict someone from, um, you know, telling someone what they can do with their land, so you've got to be careful about, you know, whenever, you can't, you know.
Well, I, I agree with you there one hundred percent, but when you look at the city of Midland, you don't have this problem, you have mobile homes and mobile home designated areas, and mobile home estates, you don't have spot placing of, of mobile homes next to stick-built homes. I, I'm just laying, I'm just laying out what's, what's going on.
But we don't have enough affordable homes, so we have to, you know, we have to, but we don't have enough affordable homes, so, you know, we have to decide, you know, what, you know, what, we have a lot of people here, and there's concerned people, so that's why we, you know.
And we're going to get to that, well, that's, that's define what you call affordable home. What is affordable home?
I have a question, so, let's say I sell my mobile home, or I pass it on to my heirs, can they replace the mobile home?
Yes.
Yes.
And it can be bigger.
And it can be bigger.
Yes. Or equal.
Okay.
Or equal or bigger, and that's, that comes from state law, it's not us.
So it can be the same or bigger?
Same or bigger.
No, it's not.
Okay, another question, so, um, I have a lot.
Yes.
And I want to put a mobile home there, is there a way I can put a mobile home there? Is there like, good, different channels that we can go, that we can put a mobile home?
So you would have to rezone.
Rezone?
Yes.
Okay.
And in order for you to rezone, it's like, we tell everybody else, it depends on what's around there, right? That you would be able to.
So there's a possibility if we can rezone?
Correct.
Correct, so what would a rezone, what does zone change cost, what would it cost me to rezone?
Um, what's five hundred?
Five hundred dollars?
Yes.
Okay.
Start saving, right?
Yes.
I'm just doing, clarify case, yeah?
No, that is the only cost, but I can only answer to him, sorry.
Yeah, thank you, I was just wanting to clarify that, thank you.
If I could have some order...
If I could have some order, the commission is asking, Elizabeth is director of planning zone.
Correct.
So she's, not the cause of this, but the head of the department. Those of us on the commission, we've seen some of this, but not a lot of it. So we have some of the same questions that you folks do. So we'd like to ferret out that information and get it out as expeditiously as possible. So I would see if the commission has additional questions.
So how many districts will there be for allowable for mobile homes after we restrict this?
Two.
Only two districts?
Correct.
Where are those districts located?
There's two, there's two districts.
How many? Where are they located at? Where are these districts located?
It's, I don't have the map for it, but you have it in your, in your map right now.
Right, would you, I think if you put this map.
Sure.
Might be helpful. Okay, I don't know if everybody can see that.
So from ten it goes down to eight, but remember, some of those, they shouldn't be in there.
So currently, there are ten zoning districts in which mobile homes are permitted. We're going to take eight of those away, reduce it to two.
Correct.
Those two being mobile home and mobile home estate.
Correct.
I think Connie's question has to do with, how many existing areas are there for mobile homes? And then we got the question, okay.
Where's the city map that shows that?
Yeah, so we don't have, you're not showing us one.
Sorry, I didn't. I did not put it in, sorry for that one.
I'm a little bit lost, are we talking about? Are we talking about district zoning or district council districts?
The council district.
Okay, how many council districts that there are not mobile homes?
No, so it affects all council districts. It's not just one council district.
Let me rephrase this, how many council districts that there are no mobile homes?
They all had mobile homes.
No.
Yes, they did. It's because of what I was telling you, that it's allowed in all zonings, and at one point, there could have been one that was placed in there.
So if I go in Mission de Rado, Country Club, Bean Bowl Estates, there are mobile homes?
There can be, remember, we still have workforce housing and all that kind of stuff in there.
It depends what you have written in your deed restrictions. You can have deed restrictions that can be taken out of there. It depends what's written in the deed restrictions.
Mm-hmm.
The difference.
Yes.
Which are separate from city zoning.
Correct.
But the question was, are they there now?
Yes. And even in all's, okay, they're going to put in the map for you. Sorry. Where were we?
We were, you were telling me that mobile homes is in every council member district, didn't you?
Yeah, so when we first started, there, there are not that many, but they are in some.
And I understood you said there are some in the Country Club, there are some in Esma.
It's how it falls into.
No.
You'll, you'll see.
Okay.
Yeah, there might not be any in Esma Estates, but in that district, there are mobile homes in different places. And like Esma Estates would have deed restrictions which prohibit those homes. I think we've got, probably got two areas of concern for folks here. One is that you're going to be kicked out of where you're living now, and that's not going to happen. The other concern is, what do I do with my land if I was going to put a mobile home on?
Yes, and that's something that you can give a recommendation to council for. You can give a recommendation. If you have a recommendation for them, you can suggest something for them. Like you can give, like, maybe they can give a grace period for a certain amount of time.
My concern is there's just not enough affordable homes for people to live in.
I can't hear you, you're going to have to.
My concern is there's just not enough affordable homes for people to live in now, so we start restricting.
So let me, let me tell you, if I can tell you something, last year in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four, we only had forty applications for mobile homes inside the city. So we're not seeing a big ask for them.
Okay.
So would you explain what forty applications? What does that mean? New locations, forty new people?
For new, for new, forty families last year put a new mobile home. That was it.
Well, there are not that many vacant lots in there. I mean, the areas where these mobile homes are, there's not that many vacant lots.
So people are still affected by this. They can still replace them, so don't forget that. They can still replace, they're not getting removed. So you still have those people that are staying there.
Yeah, so they can remember, you know.
Okay.
Okay, maybe we should just get on and no more questions.
I still want to get Connie out with affordable houses. I don't think we understand. Bean Bowl is building eleven hundred square foot homes. That's pretty affordable. That's a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars.
Well, they're not a hundred and eighty-nine thousand. They're more than a hundred and eighty-nine thousand. They're starting at, depends on where they're located. A lot of those are two hundred and fifty more than that.
Not for a hundred, eleven hundred square foot. Eleven hundred square foot mobile home is pretty close to a hundred and fifty-five thousand.
And this doesn't mean that you can also recommend, oh, can you direct, you know, staff to look into, how can we bring more affordable housing? How can we find different alternative zoning? So there's so much more that we can do as well. Like I said, this is where we have a conversation of what else can we do?
Are there any other issues the staff would like to bring up this time?
No, it's what you guys want to talk.
I think it would be appropriate to hear from the audience at this time.
So you can open it up.
So if you guys have completed, then.
You're done with the map? You can leave it up, I think. If you want to pinpoint the two zones real quick, and then.
Do you want to make it larger?
It's hard to pull, because he has to get into the system to be able to.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
It is hard to run a city, but that's what we expect.
Can I, what I understand, you're removing a lot of the restrictions.
Correct.
For them to, to work on their mobile homes.
Yes.
Making bigger, making better. But the big issue that there's also going to be some restrictions on the zonings that we're going to have.
It's just the, so it only affects new ones in those, in those zonings.
But I've noticed you're removing a lot of the restrictions that are going to have to come up here.
Correct. Yes, so we're trying to make it easier for them to be able to replace their homes.
Which is good.
Which is good.
There are two items before us today, as we were discussing. One is the approval or rejection of this particular amendment. And if it's approved, then there are some rule changes that we would vote on that would make it easier to have mobile homes, to keep your mobile homes.
Correct.
So at this time, I know a lot of you folks are wanting to have your piece. This lady over here is going to have a timer, I think we have three minutes.
Yes, three minutes.
A lot of folks. You have a list of people who wanted to speak?
Yes.
If you'd, if you'd start with that list.
So I'm going to call your name, and then I'll start the timer as soon as you start speaking on the podium, okay? Philip Harris? Philip Harris?
He's coming from the back?
Go ahead.
There's just been a lot of confusion with this. We deal with a lot of customers, and I think you brought up the point of.
Philip Harris?
Philip Harris. Yes. So we deal with a lot of people every day, and everybody was kind of caught off guard with this. Obviously, the wording was tough of it, but the affordable housing issue is what we see. We deal with customers and stuff every day. I've lived in a manufactured home for five years. I think that a lot of people maybe haven't come and seen some of our manufactured homes to see them, but the whole issue with this is people's property rights just being taken away into two zones where it's going to be in a manufactured home only. This is what, just parks only is what we're, basically. But a lot of the permits, too, you said forty, we send in permits a lot because I'm actually in the industry. And when we do that, people sometimes get denied. It's kind of like somebody was asking, is these permits into the, are they in the Country Club? No, they're not. If neighborhoods are developed out there, they have restrictions that prevent homes from, certain homes from coming in there. So why would we take away certain rights? People who have property, owners, maybe one day they want to put it up. Now what's their property worth? What good builders is there if you're not in a track build? It's hard to get a home built out here. You can't just do it affordably and have a builder come build a house for you. And if you travel around Odessa, the houses that you see, like, there's other homes, I think, that we could force some things to be clean. Why not have, like, why not have restrictions that just, and I don't think people are opposed to it, to go into a newer manufactured home? I mean, that's okay, that's understandable. Nobody wants a nineteen seventy-eight home to move, I get that. But if, I challenge everybody in here, if you haven't seen the newer manufactured homes, to come up to any of your local dealers and just walk them, look at them, look at the way that they're built. It's an affordable option, it's fast, and I don't know what, if you guys are aware of how easy or hard it is to actually build a house. It's not easy. The only way you could do it is usually if there's a development. Going to get a construction loan to purchase land to build a home is almost impossible. It's, it is impossible. Most people can't do it, you don't know where to start. Lenders don't lend that way to people unless you already own the land. So what we're doing is we're just, we're handicapping people, and I don't think anybody understands why. And I think that's what people want the answer for, is just why are we taking people's property rights away without any say? I'm sure a lot of people have a lot else to say. It is, it does feel like some of it's been stolen. I own some properties, I know people who do, and they're wanting to maybe have investments.
That's your three minutes?
Thanks for my three minutes.
Thank you. Okay, so your next one is Fiesta Homes, Dimas Avalos?
Counselman? Counselman? We are hearing from the citizens. We have a list of people who have expressed a desire to speak, and we're going just in the order that she has those. We will hear from the regular citizens. Three minutes.
Go ahead.
My name is Dimas Avalos. I've lived in Odessa for thirty-seven years now. I lived in a manufactured home for about twelve years. I have three girls to live with me. Some of their best memories are from living in this manufactured home. This is a blue collar town, basically. We think the average income is about seventy-five thousand a year for, per household. This is the best, basically the best affordable housing that you can get for your money. I don't know, I don't know of anything else out there that, you know, compares to this. If it's about making the area look better, then you have put some restrictions. You put some restrictions on what kind of spending we put on the homes, what kind of steps we put on the homes. You can make some adjustments, but some families, that's what they can afford. I don't think that we need to take, you know, that right away from the family.
Thank you.
Your next one is Maritza Gomez.
So public speaking is not my forte.
Go ahead.
I represent, I represent, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I represent my company, Clayton Homes. We have eight factories in the state of Texas. We build houses by the thousands by the day. And the precedent that restricting manufactured housing in this community specifically because of the boom environment that we come in and we have to build houses rapidly, a local builder cannot keep up with that. And I have eight builders on my table. I think the other manufactured companies altogether, there's more than twenty factories in the state of Texas. That's twenty builders that can build houses for a boom market that are energy efficient, sustainable housing. My company has a contract with the Department of Energy to build a energy efficient home that saves costs for a homeowner. We build every single house to HUD code, every single one of them. I've done, in New Mexico, when I was there, we've done developments with Tierra del Sol, a housing community, where we rehab, remove, and replace houses so that someone can have an affordable home to live in. It's really not just about the cost of the house, it's about how to attain it. I've seen, in the twenty years' experience that I have in this business, the cost of land for a manufactured home generally costs a little bit more because people can't have restrictions. So I would imagine that if, people talk about all the time, the cost of, you know, it's going to depreciate the value of my home. No appraiser, you brought it up, Connie, no appraiser ever has compared the cost of a manufactured home to the cost of a stick-built house on any appraisal, ever. I have never seen it. So that's not a concern. Maybe the desirability of your neighborhood is a concern, but most chances are that mobile home was there before you tried to buy it. So I do think that it does set a precedent if we restrict manufactured housing in this community. I would propose rezoning some areas. I think mobile homes maybe don't need to belong in industrial areas. But I think that if you go to, and you completely eliminate manufactured housing in the general residence area, that that would be a mistake. I think there's a lot of really good projects that we can work with, community development on, to get this, this community built, built up and looking right. And then I ask you to think about, how does this comply with the master plan? I read the master plan, it was revamped back in twenty twenty-two, it's been three years, right? I'm all for making Odessa look beautiful and wonderful, but eliminating manufactured housing is not really what's going to prevent us from doing that. So.
Okay, your next one is Paul Crowe. Crowe, my apologies, sir.
My name is Paul Crowe. I have some rental properties over there, and some of them are mobile homes. That's my livelihood. And I've been on that street, Carroll Drive, for seventy years. Be my birthday, I was born there and raised. And I like to be left alone to do, to live the way I want to, that's why I stayed there. And if I wanted to, I could move across town and buy a house. But I enjoy my people, and I enjoy my life there, and I don't, I don't care when somebody got up here and said the reason we're here because we are afraid we're going to lose our home. I'm not afraid I'm going to lose my home, I'm not afraid these people are going to lose their home. They have an affordable place to live. I work with them, and they appreciate it. We get along well, and you come down my street, I keep everything mowed and nice. It's one of the nicest areas. Now, there's some homes there that, they're not manufactured home, that could use a little help. There's some that are abandoned, there are not even anybody living in them. But my stuff is occupied, and it's well cared for. And partially, it's not about losing homes. I have plans to move in other mobile homes on lots that I have, and those lots are not large enough to build a home on. And it's like the man said earlier, you can't just build a home. To go through and build a home, replatinate everything and all that, I'd like to put in, close to the Coliseum, there's a demand for some RV spaces when we have a function at the Coliseum, rodeos and stuff like that. I have plans that I might want to do something like that, and set in some RV spaces that people can come and go. So I have plans, and I really wouldn't want them disturbed. And like I said, a lot of these lots are not going to accommodate a house. You're going to have to replat, put them together, a lot of things like that to build a home on them. That's about all I have to say right now.
Thank you.
Your next person is Cleopatra Calloway?
Hello, my name is Cleopatra Calloway. I am.
Hello, my name is Cleopatra Calloway, I am a citizen of this grand town, Odessa, Texas, and I own property, and I own the whole block of Avenue de Mexico there. It is vacant, and my intentions in the future is to place mobile homes there in those areas. There's several, it's like fourteen blocks there. So with this zoning, it will hurt me. This is a family legacy that we have, the property will never be sold, it's to my family, it's to my grandchildren that would be living there, and I'm opposing the rezoning district.
Moses Contreras?
I think you have a question.
I have a question here, I want to ask just a quick gentle survey here. How many are, are here and speak in favor of this, this ordinance? Would you raise your hand?
In favor.
In favor. How many are here to speak in opposition to this? Would you raise your hand? To, to me that, to, to me that says what the citizens of Odessa are looking for, and I.
Good afternoon, my name is Moises Contreras, I'm the general manager for Palm Harbor Homes in Odessa. And the reason I'm up here is, it's about the people, we've got to first remember that, and obviously that's what's going on here. And I have experience in this, dealing with outside of New Mexico, and we had the same challenge, so I'm here today to, for an ordinance directly, but to offer a solution-oriented approach and open the door to collaboration, understand the concerns being raised about manufactured homes in certain zones, but like to ask this, instead of focusing on where they shouldn't go, can we talk about how they can fit in a responsibly way? Manufactured homes today are not what they used to be, these homes are built to federal HUD standards, meet energy efficient codes, and in many cases look identical to site-built homes once placed on a permanent foundation. They are clean, modern, and add value to the people who need them most, working families, seniors, and first-time buyers. And housing costs continue to rise, cities are facing a growing affordable gap, manufactured homes close the gap without compromising quality. Vanning them right could limit opportunities for people who are already priced out of the market. And while I understand concerns about aesthetics or property values, data consistently shows that well-placed manufactured homes, when maintained and integrated, integrated with design guidelines, do not lower surrounding property values. What I'm proposing is not to ignore zoning concerns, but to give the city more options, not fewer. Conditional use permits, design overlays, or minimum foundation standards can all be tools to maintain neighborhood appeal while still allowing affordable housing growth. Let's work together on a plan that keeps control in the city's hands, meets community expectations, and still allows for housing options that real people need. I'm happy to provide examples of how other cities have done this successfully. As I've mentioned, I have experience doing this, I've dealt with it when I was with the board of directors, and we came to a meeting and we actually outbecame friends. So balancing aesthetic, safety, and affordability and closing, I'm not asking for blanket approval, I'm asking for a conversation, let's explore options instead of shutting doors. I'm confident we can find a solution that works for everyone. Thank you.
Beau Shamrat? My apologies if I mispronounced that.
Chairman? My name is Boe Shmanzorov, I'm a mobile home dealer and mobile home park owner. I just want to, obviously I'm opposed to this, and let me give you three reasons. Well, number one, we all obviously here because we want the city of Odessa to be better. So everybody's here for the same reason, we want the city of Odessa better. I just want to address one, there was a widely circulated YouTube video from a city council meeting where the biggest rationale they're using for, obviously, this proposal is they don't want a mobile home next to an automotive shop. That's, we obviously, we heard that. As a dealer, I probably put half a dozen mobile homes next to automotive shops, but let me give you number one reason why we did that, is because the owner of that shop needed a place to house their people. So, and the second, in that YouTube video, my understanding was the city of Odessa was willing to grant exemption for the UTPB. That's kind of understanding I got, you know, because of the student housing, that's, student housing, they use some manufactured homes for student housing. So my question is this, what's going to happen when you have two hundred other businesses that are going to be affected by this, when they come in and ask for the same exemption? So I'm just trying to appeal to the rationale that there is no rational, you know, decision to make this. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Ed Lassiter?
Good afternoon, my name's Ed Lassiter, thank you for the opportunity to speak briefly with you, I won't retract any of the areas that have already been covered. I have been a manufactured home retailer in this area for fifty years. The, I've also been a consumer, lived in them, enjoyed them. I'm also a real estate owner and own real estate in some of these areas that are impacted, either myself or through my company, and I am in opposition to it. I'd like to point out just a few facts, I mean, the last five years there were two-hundred-and-eighty new manufactured home permits issued, you know, in the city limits of Odessa, Texas. There's two-hundred-and-eighty users out there that are living and enjoying those homes today that might not be able to if we enact this zoning change. One point that nobody's brought out is a lot of the, the real estate in these areas where you can place a manufactured home currently are in flood zones. And it is absolutely prohibitively expensive to go in there and build a site-built home on it. You cannot haul in enough dirt to bring it up to the level that the city requires for you to get a building permit and expect to make any money if you build a site-built brick home. Can't do it. The only way you can do it is with a manufactured home. It is absolutely too expensive. The primary buyer for a vacant lot in many of these areas is someone who wants to put a manufactured home on there. And if I own a vacant lot in that area and we enact this zoning change, you have just removed a huge section of the buying public that I can sell my lot to. Maybe I inherited it from my grandpa and it's been in the family for generations, it's time for me to sell it and do some, I can't do it, my buyers are gone, because the only person that's going to buy that is someone who wants to put a manufactured home on it, where it can be blocked and the foundation set up economically so that it passes the building requirements, and I don't have to bring in five feet of dirt over a lot. It, it's a significant impact to people who already own real estate and they don't already have manufactured homes on there. Another point I'd like to make, if I understand the, the change properly, yes, you can replace your home, one time, unless it's a natural disaster, one time. And that home that you replace it with can be no bigger than the home that was on there before. Well, some of these homes aren't even manufactured that small anymore, they might have a home on there that was a twelve-by-fifty or a fourteen-by-forty-six. We don't even build those in the industry anymore. If I want to replace that home and move up, so my wife and I can relax and enjoy and have the grandkids come visit, I can't do anything bigger than what was on there before under this proposed ordinance.
That was your time, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate your point, but just a point of clarification, the, you, you can replace that one time, but the new home can be as big as or bigger than.
Yes, bigger than.
Bigger than.
Bigger than, bigger than, just clarification, just there.
Christina Carboza? Cordova, my apologies.
Good afternoon, my name is Christian Cordova, and I've been living in Odessa since two thousand and nine, when it was the first big boom. We came here from El Paso, and we came here looking for a home, but they were not affordable, so we got a manufactured home. For the past sixteen years, I've been living in the same manufactured home where it's seen me grow. I was the first class that graduated during COVID, I'm a 2020 grad, and it also saw where my family and I started a family business. We've been in business for seven years, we're about to go for our eighth year, and we started in the living room of our manufactured home. And I just also want to see the same opportunity for other people. As a sixteen-year-old, start, or fifteen-year-old, starting a business, I don't have a house, at that time I didn't have enough money to rent a commercial place and start the business in, or the manufactured home, which is a good place to start a business, a family. It's, and then it's affordable, and hearing that other people might not have the same chance as I got, it's just, for me, that's a bit anti-Texan, since quite early we fought for this land for the same reason, because they wanted to remove it, they wanted to make changes to it. And as it, I'm not a born Texan, but I am raised in Texas, it's nonsense to me as a Texan. Thank you.
Mr. De La Rosa? Craig Burnett?
Good afternoon, thank you all for listening to everyone here. I think we've all made the point that we discourage you moving this proposal forward. There are a lot of vacant lots in the city of Odessa, and there are a lot of people that cannot afford to pay two-hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a square foot for a new home. I would say probably over fifty percent, probably seventy percent of the population can afford affordable housing, that is manufactured housing, any way you look at it. By taking eight of the ten districts out, you're squashing it completely. I've been a resident of the city of Odessa since nineteen-seventy-eight, and I've never seen a proposal like this move forward. I ask that you reconsider.
Rodney Johnson?
Good afternoon, everyone, my name is Rodney Johnson, I'm the owner and operator of Big J Mobile Homes here in Odessa, is my, I'm the fourth generation owner of it, and like many of the people who have sat here before, I've lived here my entire life. My family has been here and made a point in making housing affordable for all. When I read this notice here, there was a couple of things that stood out to me that I asked questions on, that I haven't gotten answers to yet. One of those things is, I need a definition as to what significant repair and rebuild means. Now, I understand, living in the city and once owning a home in the city, that I can gut that house from one end to the other and rebuild it without a permit or inspection or anything else, as long as I do not touch any of the water, sewer, electric, anything like that. However, significant repairs and rebuild of a mobile home has to be approved by the zoning board? That seems a bit discriminatory to me. And to follow up on what some of my colleagues have already said, you know, the whole idea is to have affordable housing. If you get rid of these places that are affordable, and I own, for example, a piece of property, and you change the zoning on me, that just made that land useless to the person. It also made it useless to you to bring in tax revenue as well. So, instead of being against putting mobile homes, we need to help people put mobile homes in these areas. Lastly, the other thing is, like I said, about the vacant property, I know there's a lot of vacant lots on the South Side, I spent a lot of time down there, that's where all the best restaurants are. But these lots simply need help. The zoning restrictions already that the city requires of putting concrete walkways in, driveways in already, is a big cost for these people. So it's difficult for them to even put a new mobile home on it because they have to come up with all those costs. As a city, we do bonds in order to help all of these other builders come in here and build houses, but there's no bond whatsoever to help out on affordable housing. So I yield the rest of my time, thank you for listening.
The next person is Delma Garcia.
Well, most of us, what I wanted to say has already been said, but I oppose this all the way to my full extent. I'm in a position, I, I was born in Odessa, nineteen-sixty-five. I went to college here, I've taught school here, I'm a retired teacher. That little brown shaded area, that's where my property is, I have mobile home lots, and my sisters do too, it's our old neighborhood. And I want to put a face to people that live in these mobile homes. It's not just anybody. Right now, I'm renting beautiful, brand-new mobile home to a pre-K teacher with three children, and she chose to live there to be by the school where she teaches. In my other lot, I have a, she, she works night shifts, and she's an assistant living person, she helps seniors at night, and she works in Pecos and all these old other little towns, but she works at the night. Both these ladies don't want to live outside of the city limit, they want to stay in the city, but they can't afford a brand-new home. And so this makes it easy for them to be able to be by where they live. So for that reason, much like this other lady, I wanted to give these to my, my kids, pass it on, because we've been in Odessa all our lives, I can say that. Okay? Thank you.
Now, this one just says MEF Properties, it doesn't have a name.
I could have had my name changed to MEF Properties, but I didn't. My name is David Lauritsen, I am an attorney with the Cotton, Bledsoe, Ty &amp; Dawson Law Firm. I've been a resident of this community now since nineteen-ninety-six, I represent MEF Properties Incorporated, which is a family-owned Odessa business that is now in its second generation. My client's father built the mobile home parks that this company owns and operates. And I'd like to highlight a couple of different things that have caused confusion, at least to my client. The first issue, of course, is one, at least one of these properties is in a zone that is planned development housing, which is going to be one of the properties where it's no longer available to mobile homes. It's interesting, if you look on the map, the section that is designated planned development housing, the only living spaces in that area are my client's park. There are no other foundational or pure and being homes within that section. And so the justification for beautifying, I don't think really works in that situation. The other issue that we really are looking for clarification is one of grandfathering. I heard discussions about home parks may be grandfathered, but there are some complications that are different than a typical homeowner that owns both the home itself as well as the underlying real estate. In a mobile home park situation, the company owns the real estate, and then someone comes in, sets up in a in, sets up in a lot, has to make an application for a residential application, uh, and, uh, lives there for however that long they live there. It's unclear how that's going to work with, uh, grandfathering as these people move in and out. Further, these business parks work with the ebb and flow of the economy of the area. And right now, some of these parks have as much as a seventy-five percent, uh, vaca- vacate rate, whereas at other times, it's a hundred percent. It just depends on who is coming in and who is coming out, and that's going to be a benefit to the city of Odessa as the economy goes up and down. And so, uh, how are we going to deal with grandfathering when somebody moves out? Do they get, and then somebody moves back in? Is that the one time that you get to have an improvement? Um, and frankly, just as a question is, I don't know that I understand the restriction of an improvement one time. If you're going to improve your property with a bigger and better home, whether it be manufactured or not, why should it be restricted to one time to that particular owner? Right? Finally, one of the things that I have to point out as a lawyer is particularly in our issue, there's a regulatory takings problem, and we don't want to go down that road. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sean Fuller?
Chairman, Lady Chair, and members, I thank you today for listening to me. I've heard a lot of great citizens, a lot of great points. I made a lot of good arguments. But the truth is, as I sat back and I listened to the citizens of Odessa speak to this board, only one thing came to mind, and that is fiduciary responsibility. This board has a responsibility to these citizens, and I think they've made their voice very clear today that they don't want change. They do not want change whatsoever. I would encourage this board, all members of the board, has any member in the last twelve months been to a sales center anywhere in the state of Texas? I think the answer is probably no. Has anyone on this board considering contacting the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs and the resources that the state of Texas offers this board about the things that the citizens of Odessa are concerned with? Also, on top of that, you also have the Texas Manufactured Housing Association, which has stats and grants and all kinds of things that would be very helpful. But I think, at the end of the day, what you're going to see in those are the same thing that the citizens here are speaking of today. What unintended consequences of our actions on this board today will harm our citizens tomorrow? These are the things that we need to be considered, considering. Also, I do believe that a couple of different good members or good citizens here talked about discrimination in the Fair Housing Act of nineteen sixty-eight. Is there anything in any of these ordinances has legal run it past to see if there's anything that is going to be contradictory with federal law? But you put all that aside, you put all of that aside, and I keep hearing affordable housing, affordable housing, affordable housing. I keep hearing a man talk about how he moved from El Paso with his family and the opportunities that he received by living in a manufactured home in Odessa, Texas. I hear about Dumas talking about his children and the dreams and the aspirations that they had as they grew up. I hear Ed Lassiter talk about two hundred and sixty-eight families that now have a home because manufactured homes are allowed inside the city limits of Odessa. The last question that I would ask this board is, is taking away choice to the citizens of Odessa in their best interest?
Good afternoon, citizens of Odessa, residents, councilmen. I'm here to oppose the ordinance amendment that was given. I think the main thing that we should be concerned about, um, is bringing up the community. If it takes mobile homes to do it, I'm in all for it. I grew up in a mobile home in nineteen sixty-one off of Patterson Street, so I understand what it is, what my councilman calls as a trailer. That's a mobile home to me growing up. Uh, the people here nowadays, we're here, um, as new growth people. I have new concerned individuals that are coming up. Um, I don't see anything wrong with the mobile homes coming up in this area. We talk about things that are coming up. My main concern is over there on Washington Lane, Patterson, uh, Murphy Street. I didn't need a name change. I didn't need a name change to Martin Luther King. I needed, uh, my community to be built. We needed resources like grocery stores, community stores. I need my industry to be brought up. I think that's a topic that we should bring up. Instead of this ordinance amendment, I think that we should be talking about how we can build up the community. I turn my time over. I give my time over to my sister, Vicky, who can speak on this behalf as well.
Thank you. We are sisters. We have grown up here in Hector County, Odessa, all my life. And so, I think of it as a human right. And now, when I, uh, think of things saying for us the truth, truth is evident, some things we have seen. I gotta take accountability for myself as an American African woman that have elected some of those in position, really not knowing, uneducated. So it gets a little bit deeper than what you say. I respect anybody, just like this young man here. If it covers my head and keep me out of the rain off in that manufactured home trailer, so it be. All the homes that we have had over there, whether they be, I just want one minute. Rather, they are rundown. They are rundown homes. We know there's crack homes. We know there's debil- debilitated homes. We gotta get a little bit, why is it debilitated? We put people in a position that is not, only thinking about one. Until our people think it's collective, we never gonna get nowhere. Wake up out of that dream, Martin Luther King. You know who I'm talking about, that has been on the board. Wake up out this dream. We had a choice. They do it. I don't blame, blame ourselves and those who we put in position.
Thank you.
My name is Miguel Sanchez. I'm with A One Homes in Odessa. And I had a bunch of numbers that I was gonna go, but everything's been taken by everybody. So I think one of the things that I wanted to share with you guys is, we keep talking about the city of Odessa. We need to understand that the people here are the city of Odessa. I think that, uh, I don't know this to be a fact, but it seems true on the surface. If you're going to impose an ordinance, I think you should do a research from the citizens, not just from the numbers that may or might be, might benefit you guys. You talk about affordable housing, the gentleman over here talking about affordable housing, we keep hearing that word. Let me give you a little bit of numbers about what affordable housing is. Right now, you can get into a three-bedroom, two-bath, brand-new mobile home for less than a thousand dollars a month. You can get into a double wide.
For how many years?
I'm sorry, sir? Twenty years.
For twenty years?
Yes, sir. And if you wanted to go a little bit less than that, you could.
How many square feet?
You're talking about nine hundred square foot.
So that's a hundred and what, thousand?
That's a double wide?
It's how much, sir?
That's a single wide.
It's a single wide. And how much you said?
And what's the total price?
Seventy-two thousand dollars.
Seventy-two thousand?
Yes, sir.
Now, let's go to the rest of that factor.
Yes, sir.
I've got seventy-two thousand in a mobile home.
Yes, sir.
Forty thousand in a lot. I don't have a garage. I don't have a fence. I don't have a yard. I don't have side walls covered, curb and gutter. So now, I'm at the same price as a house.
Absolutely not. Because most of the people that have those lots, sir, if you'll let me answer the question, most of the people that have those lots already own their lots. And most of the people that are going to go to affordable housing don't have, they would like, but don't have the money and don't need to have a garage. You understand what I'm saying? The whole term here, sir, is affordable housing. We're talking about people that make fifteen dollars an hour, that we have a hard time getting them financed even for a thousand dollar a month payment, sir. Okay? So we gotta keep things in perspective. My mother's been living here for thirty years. She's on a fixed income.
Can I get in? Give him another minute. What I have seen is this thousand dollars a month you're talking about for a new mobile home does not work. I've seen mobile homes.
Where have you seen that, sir?
Unless, let's not get into that.
Let me ask you a question. Where have you seen this? What research have you done, or where have you seen this?
I asked the tenders.
Who?
The people that live in the home.
I guarantee you, sir, respectfully, you, I don't know what, what people you're talking to, but they're wrong, or you're lying, one of the two.
So they don't know what they're paying a month.
In short.
I am so sorry to interrupt, but I do own a twenty, twenty-four mobile home for sixty-three thousand dollars, and it's already paid.
Excuse me, ma'am, ma'am, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We can't get out of the, we want to hear all of you, and, and we hear what you are saying. We are paying attention. I need to keep moving along, because there's a lot of folks that, that want to talk, and we do want to listen to you. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, lastly, one thing that we keep forgetting also. The gentleman that came from El Paso mentioned that when he came from El Paso, he found manufactured housing. Whenever we have our boom times, we provide a need to have more residents come in here, which boosts our economy. On the flip side, when things get a little tough, instead of a lot of people leaving, they can turn to manufactured housing because it's a lot less expensive than stick-built homes, which also helps our economy. And with that, I yield my time.
Thank you. Stevenson? Maya Paul?
I would just like to echo my opposition to this amendment, and I thank the gentlemen here for asking the audience, who all opposes this? And it's evident that everybody here opposes the amendment. So I think we just should go along with that. There's no need for us to really continue this because there's nobody here who really supports that amendment. Nobody, so these are the citizens who have been contacted by mail or otherwise. We've stood up, and, uh, it's evident that nobody here supports the amendment. So with that, I give you back my little time. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Connie Andrews, and I do have a little bit of credibility in this. I'm pursuing my doctorate in qualitative research, something that quantitative research numbers cannot prove. The city's proposed ordinance has hints of bigotry and smells of nineteen thirties Germany. Let's put that into a percentage. It's eighty percent of mobile homes taken away, not a two-to-ten ratio. Our government is supposed to protect the values of its citizens. We are all wishing for changes that the city has promised for more than sixty years. All of my thirty, I have lived here, and I've been a primary witness of the failed promises that our city has so eloquently tried to shove down our constituents' throats. Well, not in my generation. Okay? As a government, you cannot limit me, a property owner, or the subsequent owner by forcing them to pay more than fair value when I decide to sell it. The clause of no force restrictions on sale ensures that. Look it up, Texas Penal Code. Uh, I'm aware of the trickery that you are breeding. You can only declare this if voters agree, which conveniently for you gives the government eminent domain. Yet, you claim that there will be no eminent domain assessed. If not, why are you placing clause restrictions that limit how an owner wants to proceed with their property? From my perspective, instead of helping the South Side, which is considered the most impoverished side of our town, you are forcing them to choose between a prosperous future and a comfortable and affordable way to raise a child in a city whose government has yet to balance the minimum wage. Because logistically speaking, our city doesn't have the infrastructure to handle this monumental task. Our infrastructure is falling apart. Our city cannot maintain a reputable manager, maintain reliable, readily available, and clean water for more than seven days without a main break, give basic infrastructure and our tax dollars allotted to where they're supposed to be, and keep our citizens safe with working roads that do not destroy our vehicles, which is the city and the county's responsibility. My husband is a project manager over text dot, um, which leads to higher out-of-pocket expenses for your constituents, putting a burden on them and causing higher insurance rates, maybe why they cannot afford to stay in this area. But worst of all, it actually causes higher deaths in our state, all of which could be rectified by proper road maintenance and not patch repairs. We continue to even hire, we can't even hire enough police officers to manage or be dispatched to traffic accidents, yet you try to make a new housing crisis? Not to mention how our public does not have enough proper, uh, properly updated systems, not only for our Forest Water District, but all of our other accounts that are linked, uh, linked to the city's districts online, the traffic records pending litigation, everything is online personnel records. The incompetence of our city is boundless. What about the actual future of our students? Could we add more programs for them rather than using these resources inefficiently? We do not have enough resources to stop or help with training against the fentanyl crisis that we are facing here at home, yet you propose an additional housing crisis on top of the housing crisis Odessa has experienced since the early two thousands? That's concerning to me and apparently every other citizen in here. I don't want to completely eradicate or dismantle your proposal, but the amount of red lines, look it up, from the original proposal that your city did, is disgusting. It is completely unlawful. The city's code, what is the code called, babe? The, Occident twelve oh eight? Look it up. Every single part the city has done, and it is illegal.
Larry Robinson?
Thank you, board. That'll be hard to follow. I have, I have some questions, and I'd probably more direct them to Ms. Preto, and this is for the benefit of the board, because some of the stuff you probably didn't get in the packet. The reference to, and my question was, was there a detailed map sent to each person and their associated property that they could see, or was it just generalized like this?
It's a map.
Was it just the same map? I got thirty of?
It was the same map, yes.
I got thirty of them, but you couldn't decimate, you didn't have the addresses or how it connected. So for each individual, they hardly know what that meant to them by looking at the map. And then, I have a second question. Who was the author of this proposal?
We were directed by.
Pardon?
We were directed by.
I'm sorry, who?
We were directed by, uh, city council.
Okay. Any particular person on the city council?
No, we weren't.
Okay. And then, to whom is the benefit directed?
We had a lot session that was public for everybody to come in here.
Yeah. Who would the benefit be directed to of this move?
You would have to ask council for it.
The council. We're not at the council.
No, we're not.
And should this even be turned down by this board today? It can be at the council next week.
It still goes to council.
Right over here.
Or advisory.
Yeah. So it don't matter what. Is, and as far as, uh, are any of the citizens benefited by this? Can you direct, tell me which citizens in Odessa would be benefited by this?
No one, because notification was definitely in a proper manner.
Ma'am, ma'am, if you don't, give him his opportunity, please.
And I'm just curious, where is a good Bible sample of something we could go see or a site that you visited, a city that has had this ordinance put in effect?
Midland, Texas.
And, and you're from Midland? And you were for the beautification of Midland? No? Did you not work in Midland before?
I worked in Midland, but I am not.
And what department did you work in?
In Platteville.
Pardon? In Platteville?
But I, I had nothing to do with it.
It was nothing to do with the beautification of Odessa, of Midland?
That was already happened before. I got.
Okay. But, but the end game accomplishment, what would we accomplish here if we voted for this today besides making a lot unhappy and missing informed people and, uh, non-communicated with people? I mean, a lot of these questions aren't in your packet, and there, there's no answers in there that I know of. What would be the end game?
This is why we have public hearings, in order to be able to have these conversations. Like I said at the beginning of my presentation, this is not something that is written and stashed. This is where we have a conversation in order for them to be able to suggest something to council. We put into, I write notes of everything that you guys said, so therefore, when we go to council, we have more questions for them that you guys have, have come up with.
But this board is here to vote today, make a decision, yes?
To recommend.
To recommend.
Recommend to city council.
Yes. And if they vote no, will it still go to the city council?
It still goes. They vote yes, no, however they vote, it still goes to the city council.
It will go as approved to the city council.
However they recommend to vote.
Even if they vote no. Rejected, it'll still go as approved. Rejected, it'll still go as approved or adjusted?
It depends on what they vote for. I can't speak for them. It's just like the, just like the senate.
And I, and just general, what would be the positive effects of this, the attributes that would encourage anybody here to vote for this?
Like I said, we are still keeping the, um, mobile home estates and mobile homes. That doesn't mean that they cannot, they can say, oh, we want to keep GR, which is a general residential and just move it out from the heavy industrial and all that. Some people mentioned about the workforce housing. Workforce housing isn't being touched. Some people mentioned about the mobile parks. Mobile parks are not being touched as well. Their, their land uses, it's just this land use of mobile home was the only one that there was certain categories that didn't fit into it. That doesn't mean that we cannot create something newer. Doesn't mean that we can't just sit there and do something else.
Okay, time.
Excuse me, excuse me.
How did the city council decide each little cube of that map, the ornaments, saying this one and not this one, even though they're the same zoning, some it's permitted and not, and it's along the lateral arteries? Was it for beautification or what was the purpose?
That was time.
That was time. Let's move on to the next one.
Thank you.
Next.
Next. Well, you don't have time. You don't, you don't have any time. We have a lot of people we need to listen to.
Right. I'm winding up right now.
Oh, you're done. Well, yeah, excuse me.
Mr. Robinson?
I'd like to get it out before you vote today.
The final vote is May twenty-seventh.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got a couple of other folks.
We have two more people left, guys. Larry Law?
This is not a final vote.
Pardon?
This is not a final vote.
Mr. Law?
I'd like to speak.
Just a moment.
Can anybody answer his question? What is the benefit to the city? Why is that?
Aren't y'all supposed to inform us today? No, that's why they have to go to council for that. It's like for the benefit of the city.
One more.
You can have a presentation as well, though, why it would benefit.
Okay. Elizabeth, let's kind of catch back and forth. I'd like to hear from.
We have one more. The name wasn't written. Was that yours? You're welcome to come up. You can state your name, sir.
And I'd like to hear, if you've got something new, let's, let's talk about it. If, if it's the same information, uh, I'd like to hear more from the citizenry rather than from the mobile home dealers.
Yes, sir. My name is Richard Rogers. I'm a citizen of Odessa. I've lived here since nineteen ninety-nine. I'm self-employed. I work for myself. I have a few helpers here and there. I purchased a property in the Malone subdivision on Carolyn Drive in two thousand nine and since that time have personally rebuilt one of the houses on there and turned it into a rental property for some of the citizens who could be able to afford medium income housing. Um, since then, I've also purchased a mobile home and put it on that same property. There's another section of it. It's an acre and a third and I plan to develop it a little bit more. My plan is and works with S.W. Howe right now to develop that and to replat it so that I can add more mobile homes to it, probably purchasing from the dealers in this area so that I can provide more housing for people. And in doing so, with these news changes, then it's going to prevent me from being able to do that. Um, under the current codes, it's zoned as light commercial and it does list mobile home housing and plenty of other things that the property can be used for. All this was provided for me from the website of Odessa from S.W. Howe. Um, this is basically going, my income, it's what I do. I have never made more than seventy-five thousand dollars a year and I've used every single dollar I could to put into those properties so that I could rent them and build something of myself and for my family. And this is going to prevent me from being able to do that. The last, in, uh, February, one of the houses was vacant. It was a two-bedroom, one-bath house. I put it up on Marketplace so that I could put it in. I had over a hundred and fifty people inquire about that home because it was less than a thousand dollars for rent in one day. I couldn't even respond to the amount of people that needed it. So, there's a huge need for this community to have affordable housing. Mobile homes do, manufactured home, however you want to address it, do provide some of that. And a lot of these people have these properties, like I said earlier, they own their own properties and they're just looking for someplace to be able to afford, to put something in there. So, I encourage the city to not, I oppose this strongly, I encourage them to not change the zoning. Under the current zoning, you can already put a mobile home on the property that I own. You don't need to change anything to do that. I suggest that we work with the citizens and try to do something that would make housing more affordable to people and this is going to be more restrictive, more, who's going to be able to go through that? Who can afford five hundred dollars to go and see if they can change their property's zoning? Who's going to be able to go through the process to do all of that stuff? Who has the time to go down here and sit in these meetings and see if you guys are going to approve all that stuff? I highly encourage you guys to oppose this so that the citizens of Odessa can do what they want to do with their properties that they work hard for. Thank you.
All right. We'll take a few more comments. That was the last of the folks who had submitted, uh, written requests. Uh, there was a gentleman over here.
Go ahead.
Come forward, give us your name.
My name is Billy Landa. I do own a mobile home in Odessa that is currently in a park. First of all, no one's trying to move mobile homes into the country club or nothing like that. But I did purchase some property to put mobile homes on. It is in the flood zone. There's currently mobile homes across the street, on two sides of that street, and I purchased the property to move my mobile home onto it and with this change, I cannot move it. I've been paying rent for a place to put my mobile home until I could afford to buy property to move it. And now with this change, it's zoned like commercial, I cannot move it. And like I said, the, across the street is all mobile homes, the, the side streets are all mobile homes. This whole block is empty. But, and I just purchased the property, but if this goes into effect, I can't move mine. Then it makes the property worthless because it is in a flood zone. So, that's all I have to say.
I think we'll take, we'll take a few more comments. If anyone else?
I think someone in the second row, I don't know if it's a lady.
I've got somebody on here.
Hello. My name is Janine Lyons. I have been here all of my life and, um, um, I, I was reared in, um, West Texas, I mean in Odessa. My, my dad is, is Jimmy Miller and my mother's Lorraine Miller. My concern is, and what I'm asking about, is what is the actual benefit of this? What, what are we actually trying to accomplish when we, if, if you vote for this as against to opposing it? And then two, if there is a grandfathered mobile home already on somebody's land, next to some land that I have and I have to bu, build a home on it, what does that do to my house that I have to build? Because I can't put a manufactured or a mobile home on it. And another question is, we have to be able to establish the difference in mobile homes, manufactured homes, and modular homes. They are all three different. When you put it up there on the, on the thing, mobile homes were nineteen seventy-eight and then the ones were after. And it makes a difference. And modular homes and manufactured homes are so different. I have a, I have property now where there is a mobile home that is under once, um, nineteen seventy-eight. And if I, if you, if you do this now, I have now put a actual stick home on my land and that means I still have a grandfathered in modular, I mean manufact, I mean, excuse me, mobile home on the land. So, when you want to say it's going to drop the property value, well, what does that do to my home that I have to build on the land? So, those are things that we have to kind of look at. Does this help? How does this benefit? Where does this, what is the benefit of this for the community? That's, that's all I'm concerned about is what is going to be the benefit? If it's not going to be a benefit, if it's because you're going to make more money because you're going to bring in people who can, uh, build homes, then you have to look at what you're doing to your community. And the majority of the people who are coming into the community normally comes to the South Side first, unless you got lots of money. Unless you have lots of money, you either go to the West or you go to the South. And so, we just need to be able to be looking at people and what we're doing to our community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Selvietta Nivas and I have a question. I currently live in a house, single-family detached home. And, um, if something was to happen to my house and I could not, my option was not to rebuild, because we all know it costs a lot to rebuild. Could I put in a mobile home?
So, it depends on your zoning. I don't know if you.
It would be in that district, what you're wanting to do.
So, if you wouldn't.
That's why I'm opposed, because this is my land and I feel that I should be able to do that if I can't afford it.
Good afternoon. I have no written script or no anything. I just decided to talk.
Give us your name.
I come from Spearman, Texas.
Your name?
Pedro Bonilla. I was born and raised in Chihuahua, came here when I was five years old to Spearman, Texas. What I talk, what I hear from you guys, y'all are trying to make Odessa look better. And I see there's a comparison, Midland, 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 all y'all talk about is Midland. Okay. If y'all have been to Midland, I twenty down south on Loop two fifty. It's a crap hole. I'm not going to say it, okay? Yeah, this isn't Midland, but y'all are saying Midland is way better than Odessa, okay? Y'all need to go over there and see the mobile homes. Okay? So, I'm not talking Midland. Let's talk Odessa here. Loop two fifty, okay? You're trying to make it look better. And if you buy land and you're trying to put a mobile home, you don't want to let us do it anymore? I have land where I want to put a mobile home, but yet I spoke with Elizabeth just not too long ago. Great, nice lady. Everybody here, you know? But anyway, you go in there, first thing they ask you, you got to put concrete, you got to put fence, you got to put firewalls, have to have special windows on a mobile home. So, it's making it look pretty. But these houses that are already in these neighborhoods, old houses fixing to come apart, why don't y'all address that? Why don't y'all send them something that they got to clean their yard? Why don't you have them build a fence? If you want to make it look better, it's not to kick people out of their land. The people who are already there, they making this place look ugly. Have them get up and clean their place. Make it look better. That's how you make Odessa look better.
Please state your name as well.
I'm Larry Conway. I lived here in Odessa, uh, I don't know how long. I moved here from Crane in nineteen seventy-eight. I started buying rental properties so I could help people. Wife and I made the decision to buy mobile homes at one point and we said, we're going to do it to help people. We've even at this point in life, I turned seventy-seven last year, in case you're curious, I've started selling to people that are renting from me that are good pay. I would like to see the city address some of the things that was mentioned today and my memory's not good enough anymore to recall all of it, but you apparently are recording it. And so, I would like you to refresh yourself with all of the different good points that people put out today. And I've got one point. Uh, Mr. Crowe, there he is. He's a neighbor of some of my properties and his properties look great. Mine are fair. I've tried my best to keep them up, but the city will not do anything to the street in front of any of nine of my properties. I have to do it. At one point, five years ago, I asked one asphalt company to make a bid on what it would cost me to pave that street again because it was getting in such bad shape. It was ten grand five years ago and I couldn't afford it. I don't know what it would cost now. But I would like to see the city take into consideration changing things to where that they help people by fixing streets, fixing water lines.
Yes.
Little bitty word to say, but it's a whole lot of responsibility. Mr. Chairman, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. I remember you a long time ago.
I don't remember you. I hope it was you.
Okay, anybody else?
My name is, uh, I was Timorales. I've been here a long time. I haven't invested in, uh, in this, in this city, in this town. When we first came, we didn't have a whole lot. My dad told us that we needed to invest, he said, buy land. Well, I've done that. Every tax, every bill that you've sent me, you told me to clean this, I cleaned it, put this, fixed the sidewalk, I fixed it. The house was, the, the, the house that was on this land was bad, so we knocked it down. So, now I got four lots and I bought one. I paid too much for this last one, but it was close to my other ones and I should have an option to do what I want with what I've invested in my life savings in. So, if you guys do this, other people have talked about it, it's not fair. It's not fair that y'all be able to deduct my future from what I've invested in. Now, I can't do what I want with it. Who does something with your property? Who tells you, I have ten kids, so let's be, and I say, I like a park where you live and then you sell your house and let's just make a park for the community? Who, who, who votes on that? That's not going to happen, but it's always to the little man, to somebody smaller. It's not fair and I oppose this.
Is there anyone else in the audience that has not spoken?
Please state your name.
I'm Richard Gonzalez. I have, I moved from Houston. I worked at the time at the refineries there and I moved to Houston, I moved to Odessa about thirteen years ago and I, uh, I started to rent a place, a little apartment, me and my wife and my kids. And then, uh, we decided to move into town, closer to town. We're still in town, but we moved a little closer to town. And I've been living in my estates for eleven years and I, uh, we've done a lot of work to our home. We've paid the, the city to put a new curb, to run the concrete in the front of the slab in front of the house. Uh, all the utilities, all our, all our electrical, plumbing and all that had to be inspected by the city. And, uh, so we've wasted a lot of money on that. Our home has, uh, mobile home, it's been there in the land for eleven years. We put up fence, we put a fence in our, in our, in our yard. Uh, we've done concrete on the, on our, in our driveway and we've done a lot of work to our home and it's been our home for eleven years. And I, I do feel that it's, the city needs to, uh, you know, let us live there because first of all, we haven't, I haven't been, we already gone ten years, we already fathered in for, for ten years and I do feel that it's, it's time, the city to give us a break. We, we work hard. I've been going out to work in the fields. I've been working in the, in the, in the oil field. I've been going out to work in the fields, I've been working in the oil field. I worked in Carlsbad for three and a half years, for Holiburton, and I was working there, and I only had over twenty-one days on and four days off, which I would come back from Carlsbad over here to my home, and I would do what I could at home, but all this time, I had it as my home, it's never been anywhere else. I come from South Texas, I come from the valley, from Rio Grande Valley, from the city of McAllen. And we were, I was raised and born, my wife is born about twenty miles from where we lived up in Minnesota for a while, but we came down after thirteen years. We came to South Texas, and we've always been from South Texas, but now we come to this beautiful city, you know, Odessa, and we're making our home. We, it's been rough, you know, but we've gone through it, you know, and as a family, me and my kids, we love Odessa. We lived here and we love Odessa. We love the people that live here, we love who we stand for, because we stand in, and we believe that everybody's, have a speech, and also, not only a speech, but also negligence and everything else we have to do to be part of the city. And I feel the city needs to understand that we were here to stay. You know, some people here, maybe they have a short time, they've been in their trailers or their homes, but I think we need to stay here in Odessa, and I don't have anywhere to go. This is my home, this is my, this is where I live. I live in Odessa, and I love Odessa. Odessa's beautiful, you know, and we'll keep it that way, City Mayor, and we feel that it's a problem for, not only for me, but for everybody else here, here in this audience here. And I do thank you for everyone who's that showed up, myself, I just got out of work because I was stuck in traffic. We had that big accident on 20.
That was time.
I got here late, and I appreciate everything, your time and your concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Frances Rodriguez. I've lived here all my life myself, since 1965 when I was born. What I want to see, I want to see these old houses torn down, because that's what makes our city look bad. Mobile homes don't make our cities look bad. It's the worn-out houses that people don't live there, they're all boarded up, and that's what makes our city look bad. That's one of my concerns, because I live in a mobile home, my mobile home is stuccoed, it doesn't look like a mobile home, but I've put a lot of work in it too. And I would appreciate if you guys could work with us in cleaning up the South Side and cleaning up those ugly houses that are out there, you know? And that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Okay, I'm thinking we're just about done, maybe one or two more, but I think we're hearing the same thing.
Kind of the same thing. Also born 1965, I'm Odessa Bronco.
Yeah!
Yeah!
Please state your name.
Your name?
Red Anderson. Went to high school with the mayor, graduated with Cal. In about 2010, my wife had a terrible car accident, and she's a quadriplegic, so we needed a new house. And we lived in Clyde at the time, which is right outside of Abilene. And the only available thing I had, my great-grandmother had some property right next door to the house I grew up in. So the only thing we could do was buy this trailer house, or call it Trailer House Stigma, right? Everybody lives in a trailer house, there's a stigma attached to it. But this is a really nice manufactured home, perfect for a handicap person. If I hadn't had that land, and I wouldn't have been able to put a mobile home on that land, I might not have been able to afford a place for her to be taken care of. Completely against this ordinance, it's silly. I don't even know, nobody's explained yet what the benefit is for Odessa. Last speaker. The property I live on, right around the corner from Mr. Crowe, all the houses, the mobile homes that are there have nice yards, almost all of them. You get the houses that have been there for a million years, terrible, terrible, terrible. I don't know, I get emotional, I'm sorry. But to me, it's just silly for this. Should we put mobile homes in industrial places? Probably not. Maybe that's what we need to look at, places where we don't put mobile homes that may be dangerous, you know, chemicals, that kind of thing. People don't need to be living there anyway. But, really don't know what else to say, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. What, have a lady?
Hi, my name is Iris Terrazas, and I have a question. So you're saying we're grandfathered in, and we can keep our home, we don't have to move or anything, but what happens when I want to sell the home? I can sell it, but nobody wants to buy it because now they can't keep the mobile home on it. So if somebody new comes to buy it, they can keep it on it?
Does that answer your question? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen over here. It's the last one.
This will be the last one, guys, and please state your name.
My name is Trey Zebra Williams, and that's my mom right there. She ninety, she about to be ninety years old, you know? And we just got a place from A-1 Mobile Homes, they just barely put down a couple days ago, you know, and there's a lot of weight on me, I gotta take care of my mom, you know what I mean? And my mom is sick right now, too, and I don't really understand what's going on, I don't know why this is happening. It's not only me, it's happened to everybody, you know, that's not right, you know? And I don't know if this is going in one ear and out the other for y'all, but I'm just saying, like, put yourself in our shoes, you know what I mean? I mean, if somebody's gonna say y'all can't do something, y'all gonna feel some type of way, you know? But we should all just try to talk about this, you know? I don't, I'm just talking on behalf of myself, my mom, and everybody else, you know? But I don't want it to, like, I don't agree with none of this that's going on, you know? But the Lord's in control of all this, you know what I mean? At the end of the day, it's up to Him. That's all I got to say.
Well, I did want to say thank you to everybody that showed up here today. I know you guys are busy, and it's not the most appropriate time, we understand that. That's my charter, and I can't, that's the time that I have to set these meetings up. I do want to say that if you're here and you have not turned in your objection letter, please turn it in to us before you leave, because it does make a difference. From all of the, and I'll show it to you once they come back on, from all the notices that we sent out, we're only a 1.5% of objections. So, which means that from the community that we're being, we're impacting, I did not receive as of right now that many objection letters, doesn't mean that it's gonna change, that, you know, we can still get some more that's coming.
And you all need to make sure that you show up to the city council, every one of you people that came, you need to make sure every one of you show up and bring at least a hundred of your friends.
And if they can't come, that's gonna be May 27th at 6:00 PM, if they can't come, they can still, you know, voice their opinion. That objection letter counts, because we document that. So our council will see those numbers. It's only one, oh, if you have multiple, yes, if you have multiple properties, you can turn one per property. And you can, and you can ask him. I sat down with him, and I told him how many properties he have. Okay, so now we move to... So, that's... Yes, it's close, it's close to the public, so they can't talk anymore.
Okay, we're in close to public portion, I think the commission is ready for discussion and a motion. Gary, I think you've got something.
I'd like to make a motion that we do not approve this ordinance as written, and I make a motion that we disapprove this.
Can I have the discussion?
I do, I do want to say, though, there's two parts.
Let me make it, I've got some discussion I'd like to present. I really appreciate everybody that's come out, appreciate your opinion. I hope that you felt like you were able to speak your mind and that you were heard. This commission is a lot like you guys, and there's a lot of things that we were not aware of when this came forward. And I think the commission needs to consider that it could have been presented a little differently, a little better. I think city needs to do a little studying on it. I think there are a lot of things that were reported today that city needs to listen to and look at. It's no reflection on the staff, you guys did what you were supposed to do, did what you were told to do, and I think we need to listen to the citizens.
Yeah, I move that we turn down this mobile home, manufactured homes ordinance amendment, item eight here on our agenda.
That's the end of the discussion? I had something.
I mean, I realize there's a motion on the floor.
But discussion, it's still... I'm in favor of discussion, I think we need to get everything out that we can.
Okay, you know, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out also. I think staff has done an excellent job on trying to present this and try to answer all the questions. The people that are here are passionate about their homes, their mobile homes, their manufactured homes. The other part of the community that is complaining is not complaining about people like you. They're complaining about people that are living in these mobile homes that are rental homes that's turning over every six months. That's what the big complaint is. They put those mobile homes next to houses that owe $200,000, $300,000, $400,000. And it's not just South Side, I mean, some kind of way we try to narrow this down to be South Side. It is the city of Odessa, so it's just not South Side. I heard a lot from citizens, I understand that, I understand where you're coming from. I think we have done an excellent job of trying to protect the home that you're in and gave you options on down the road if you want to upgrade, bring in a new home, sell or whatever, I think that's been addressed. I think they have done away with some fees that you would normally have to go through. That's all been taken care of. I heard from a lot of mobile home dealers, they ain't here for one dang reason only, just have a mobile home.
That's incorrect.
And when they come in here...
Excuse me.
Let me finish? Will you let me finish? When they come in here and compare a stick-built home to a mobile home and saying that a mobile home is affordable, they're not telling the whole truth, you know? They're trying to make their commission. I have seen mobile homes go way over $200,000-some thousand dollars.
Excuse me, please.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion among the commission?
No, it's good.
Okay, you want to start on, Gary, if I understand, your motion is just on number, item number eight of mobile manufactured home ordinance.
At this point, yes, I'll go to number nine, we'll get eight.
Okay, so, any other discussion on item number eight?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
As we move to this motion, I think we should give also a recommendation to city council, city staff. As you have the people owning the mobile homes, they're selling their mobile homes, they're willing to come in and meet us halfway. They're willing to put more beautified mobile homes, I think that's something that we need to consider taking back to the city council as well. We need, they're willing to meet us halfway. Yeah, flood zone. I live in a flood zone. When I bought my house, I couldn't afford my flood zone, you know, for a little bit because of my parents, thank God, were able to help me, but I understand. And if we could get in writing, and we get the gentleman in the black shirt, I forget his name, had it written down here, and the other lady, they're willing to come and meet us halfway and to beautify. So I think that should be a recommendation to the city council and to the city to meet with them, discuss it, bring it back to us so we could beautify those houses that they have.
Thank you, Neil. Got discussion, are we through discussion? So Gary has made a motion that we do not approve item number eight, and I think Connie seconded it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, one opposed, and I think this is going to city council with the recommendation that they listen to the citizens, consider the things that we discussed today.
Yes, to, on May 27th. Now we have a second, the other item.
Okay, now we're back to number nine, the non-conforming uses amendment.
Yes, so this one is actually a state law that we're trying to clean up and make sure that we're in compliance with our state law.
So your recommendation is that we approve it, even if the city council...
Regardless, even if you guys do nothing to it, I still have to comply to state law. So if you get someone, if we all are gone here, like, let's say twenty years from now and the law has not changed, if it's not written in our charter and nobody pays attention, they accidentally can give them the wrong information.
Can you give us an update, and there's a lot of information thrown at us at one time, can you give us an update? Just a quick update of what this, just on, you got two minutes to tell us what that...
So what this is saying now is, let's assume that the first ordinance that we just talked about doesn't pass, okay? What this means is that anyone else that, it's almost the same thing, only now it would be allowed in the same ten districts. Let's say in one of the other five or six districts in town, someone had an existing mobile or manufactured home, they could replace it. So everyone here would still be allowed to build a new one, right? Because the first ordinance, we just said, if council agrees with you, and it just means that, say someone's in like another zoning district that's not one of those ten, they could then, they wouldn't be able to build a new one because the zoning doesn't allow it, but they could replace theirs. So all this is doing is, we have to follow this anyway, this is just state law. All we're doing is, we're just, we're spelling it out in our ordinance to repeat what's already there, and the truth is, we think that's a good idea, because then the public, there's some scrutiny there, the public can look at, they're not gonna know like what the state law says, but they're gonna look at their local codes, they're gonna come talk to us. So we think this is going to essentially allow all the other ones to continue as well.
For seventy-five years, we've not had any of this issue, and I don't, I don't understand, it's like we're kicking the hornet's nest around here for very little reason. I mean, I haven't even heard, and several have asked, why are we doing this, and who's pushing this, and all the council is. There's probably one or two on this council that have pushed this, and there's obviously not in favor by the public. So I don't understand, after seventy-five years of operating in these areas like they have been, why all of a sudden are we kicking this hornet's nest?
This is a state law. I can't overpass a state law, though. So if we don't want to put this in our charter, we don't have to, I will still have to obey my state law.
Well, certainly, obey your state laws. Do so.
So... We're trying to do it so it's clean and so it matches, that's it.
Here's the question, what do we need to do to comply with the state law, so that the city can operate properly?
Correct. We want to be in compliance.
Yeah, so what do we need to do to be in compliance? And we don't restrict our residents from...
Let me just answer that one last question. So one kind of went with two. If we were concerned, if council passes one and limits y'all from being able to replace your mobile home, then by having number two, that second ordinance in there, even though I know it's a repeat of state law, if all the people that, the other whatever, six thousand people that didn't watch the news, or that didn't get the letter, or maybe they didn't know what was going on, didn't call us, didn't come out today, at least those people would know that it was codified somewhere, that, hey, they can replace theirs too. But I see your point, if one doesn't pass, then it really twos a moot point. It's just to have it in there so that they can refer to it if they needed to, because then a lot of citizens, they come in, you know, for, they call us for anything, which is good, they come into their local level, they don't know a lot, and just like we don't know a lot about federal or state law, because we're at the local level.
I move to table it.
It goes to city council.
Yeah, well, I move to recommend it to table it for the city.
For us.
So your motion is table it at this time and wait till city council votes?
Yeah, I recommend...
What's your recommendation to table for?
I move to recommend us to table it, I move for the city council.
Yeah, but what condition, like with what condition?
Because it's a mute, it's a mute item.
Okay, but you can recommend that to them.
I do, that's...
Okay, so you're recommending to city council to table it?
Yes.
Okay, got you.
Until the first is addressed.
For more information, for more feedback.
I got you, I got you.
On the basis, because we're recommending them to table that.
Completely got it.
So if we table this, we don't ever get it back?
No, she's saying for them to, for city council to table it. Did I understand you correctly?
Yes. And we can do that.
Well, they shouldn't have to, they shouldn't address it at all, because it's not, yeah, because there's no issue with it, because it's...
I think there's just a confusion about the two amendments, so I think they just...
Or deny, I recommend to deny it. Well, they can't deny it, because it's not...
And that's why...
And I think they're getting the amendments confused.
Yes.
We're gonna table it.
Elizabeth, y'all aren't gonna violate the state law anyway.
We're not.
So, it's a moot point.
Right, it's a moot point, that's why I'm saying, let's just...
Yeah, and that's why you can recommend that.
So Connie has made a motion to table
To table it. I need a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
One.
All right, motion passes. Is there anything else?
Just want to remind everybody, if you haven't turned in those, uh, notices, turn them in. You can turn them all the way, all the way until No, you can, you can turn, and if you lost it, don't worry, you can come and ask us for a new one, and we can give you a new one. So don't worry about that, and May 27, 6:00 PM.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Uh, third floor, planning.
Have a motion to adjourn, is your second?
Second.